Nope, or not. And we're staying. I don't know. I give up. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the November 13th, 2017 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please call the roll.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Henke?
Here.
Parson?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes and executive minutes of October 23rd and budget work session meeting minutes of October 14th, 17, 24th, and November 2nd? Hearing non-councilman Lee moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Jones. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue not necessarily on the agenda this evening. If you are here for a public hearing, we can wait until then. And remember that you have three minutes and this is not a question and answer. Thank you. Mr. Engelmeier. You may have to pull that microphone or get it situated. Thank you. Good evening, all.
John Engelmeier, 1281, very low. 63031. I'm here this evening to speak on two of the items on our agenda tonight. This is re-ification, substitute bill 9318, substitute bill 9319. In terms of substitution and laws of many of those ordinances, I would like to know who are and what was changed, needs to be all ordinances. In reading it, I don't know what would have changed in this clarification today. I was hoping to have... I was hoping to have some information and see little Gerald's here on that code, the building code, changes that would be made in the city. Other than that, those are the two items I have. And I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tossie is here right now and maybe he can just come up. Now I'd like to amend the agenda and have him come up and just explain the substitute bill 9319. Thank you, seconded by Mr. Egan. All in favor?
You have specific questions?
You want to just to explain what we're doing and the fee schedule?
Certainly. You all had a memo either on your desk or an email today about some further changes?
You may have to pull that microphone.
After discussing with the mayor, some of the fee changes outlined in the bill that's gone past the first reading, he suggests that we bring to your attention some of those things so that we can open it up for some detailed discussion. There are two sections in the code which do have a good amount of fees. One section is restricted to building construction permits. The other section is restricted to occupancy-related fees. Both of those sections independently have been examined by us in attempt to determine what type of increase we can expect in the future financially. And after looking at it in detail, it appears as though there will be an estimated $100,000 generated from either of those respective sections with a total of estimated $200,000 annually from those fee increases. Do you have any questions about the correspondence you received specifically?
Bill, he's here now and he doesn't have to wait through if you want to just go ahead and ask. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I want to thank you for the information today because it really helped me. 9319 is a really large, comprehensive bill and I tried to spend some time after I got the email trying to go through it and I do have a few questions I wanted to ask, though. In looking at the fee comparison that you sent from the county and the other municipalities, I'm assuming that that reflects the fees that we're proposing in the new bill, not our current fees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, do you have any kind of comparison for the council as to what fees were currently versus what they will, you know, as opposed to? I mean, I was trying to pull the existing code and compare it to the bill, but there was no real breakdown to before or after, you know, it just...
Yeah, we can just pass them, Erin. And then, is there any way you can put one of those on the overhead?
I don't know that we can get to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Technical difficulties.
I can't turn it on.
Oh, I thought they were working on it in the back.
I don't think that's going to work.
We don't know if they've gotten it fixed yet. I think there's two papers.
Don't know how to operate that, but if somebody who does...
I don't think it's going to work.
Right, they're in the back trying to fix it. I just thought maybe they could do it.
Okay, my next question has to do with the fees that are associated. And I'd like to know if, I kind of was reading in your email, but do the fees that we're proposing come anywhere close to covering our costs? Or are they just in an attempt to...
Our cost is a tricky thing to estimate. We have to take in several factors. Some of those factors have to be educated guesses. But our cost changes per process. Essentially, we've estimated that for every inspection we perform, it costs the city approximately $75, approximately. So some of these fees don't come even close, others do. And it really depends on which particular fee you're talking about. So $75 is a moderate estimate. We believe it's fair. And we're taking into account salaries and the percentage of each salary dedicated to each particular process. We attempted to estimate it overhead, which is also very difficult. But to the best of our ability, a moderate estimate is about $75 an inspection.
As an example, I know that in our initial inspections, they all include, on the initial permit includes two inspections, the original inspection and then you give them a rein inspect for no additional charge. That's correct?
Well, we charge initially $40 for the application, two inspections, for an occupancy application as opposed to a construction permit. And if you notice, if you look at your summary, you can see the very first line, occupancy app and two inspections. That's referring to the minimum housing application. We currently charge 40 and the ordinance records a proposed 75 for that inspection. I'm sorry, two inspections and the application processing.
Okay. So if they need a third inspection, we're proposing $50 for a third inspection? Does that come, that doesn't really cover your cost for a third inspection?
No, no, it doesn't.
Do you know if St. Louis County or the other municipalities, do they include their first rein inspection with theirs? Or is that just for the initial inspection if you have to come back for a second?
It is most common to have two inspections associated with that fee. And the reason is it's very seldom that an inspection gets performed and there are no violations. And that's true with all the municipalities or most of them that I surveyed.
Okay. So back to what I'm going to call the third inspection or the rein inspection. We're proposing $50 for that rein inspection, but you're saying it's probably much higher than that to initiate a third inspection?
Approximately 75. The reason the $50, it's somewhat common, or at least it's in the ballpark of what the average of most are. If you look at the sheet that was handed or sent to you today, you can see that in reality, the scale is really all across the map. We have anywhere from, let's say for an extra inspection, the farthest to the left. Some of them just do as many inspections as necessary, never charge anything for it. Interestingly enough, those are also the municipalities who, when asked, throw the caveat in, "But just wait for a year because we're reviewing those fees." They feel the shortfall as well. But you can see that the scale goes from nothing, $10, on up. And $50 is a high mark for that extra inspection. But to push it beyond that, we did not think was palatable.
And then my last question is on the commercial fees. I reviewed the new scales and that's a lot of comprehensive stuff, but do you feel they're comparable to St. Louis County and the other municipalities? Are they in line now based upon that?
Which commercial fees are you referring to?
Well, I'm looking at all of them and you gave us the reference there. And I'm going to say like new, let's just say new construction for a minute. Pages.
For new construction, the fee schedule that is in the ordinance is St. Louis County's fee schedule line for line?
Okay, it is. So we're going to be matching St. Louis County?
Yes, that's correct. And to be clear, when you look at and compare it line for line, there are times that the current fee schedule, our current charge schedule is higher at times. But if you notice, you can see the, you know, the many tiers of construction cost. At the top of that scale, it tends to be higher. At the mid to lower end of that scale, it tends to be lower. But that changes throughout the scale as well and as you can see, it's fairly long.
I appreciate you being here. I know you probably had better things to do on a Monday night, but thanks for being here. So that's all I have.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you. Erin, I got just a quick question. In the event that we go to, an inspector goes to a house and he does inspection, he gives them four or five things to repair, and then we come back and do the second one for free, correct?
Well, we don't consider it free.
That's included?
Yeah. It's considered paid for already.
Okay, here's my question. Oftentimes, one of the things I hear from my residents frequently is a different inspector come back, trip number two, and inspects what was on the list and then says, "Oh, by the way, I see three or four of those items." So then it compels a third inspection. Would we be charging $50 for that third inspection?
We would. We would. Now...
I don't think I like that.
It's our policy not to just add violations willy-nilly, strongly. It is our policy against that. However, if those, if a second inspector sees something that's health and safety related or major, they do need to bring it up. But the vast majority of violations are not what we consider major violations. So if I were to get that call as a supervisor and there were some, what I would consider non-major or non-health or safety related, I would probably not allow those violations to be added on to that next inspection. We don't want to just continue to compound that. We don't think that's fair. And inspectors do miss things, so a second inspector can't come along and see something. But if that is not a major item, we prefer to just let it rest on the first inspection.
Thank you.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Erin, I have a question on the fence.
Yes.
Ours would be a $96 flat rate, correct?
Currently, there's no flat rates in the ordinance. So this is, 96 is the beginning of the scale. So currently in the ordinance, the fence would be just like any other new construction permit. It would start at 96. If you look at this...
Say like all of that's got, they tack on $10 per 100 feet after their initial...
Correct. On this chart...
Is that something that was thought of?
Yes, and there's several methods that add other layers of fee application. We prefer to make it as simple as possible. So we wanted it to be either flat or follow the scale rather than like some people, for instance, that particular $75 incorporates three or four other things, like an application fee, a plan review fee. They build in inspections, so they have one or two inspections depending on the plan review. It's more time-consuming and it's more complicated. We prefer to make it either one or the other just to avoid that type of possibility for confusion. But we did consider some of those others. For instance, if you notice, I've got a note there that says, there's a number slash K. What that means is dollars per thousand. For instance, let's pick one just above that, Brentwood for a fence, 75 plus $6 per thousand of construction cost.
Thank you.
Sure. We'd also, if I could add, we'd also like citizens to be able to reference the fee once and for all. For instance, when I am researching these fees, it's very difficult for me to find out what they charge unless I call them and get a long explanation, get them examples and so on. We'd like for somebody to look online or look in the book and know exactly what they're going to be charged. We want that clarity. We really do.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, Erin, when's the last time these things were updated, do you know?
Ours?
Yes.
I believe that was 2010 and I believe that would show that at the beginning of the section. But maybe Karen would be in authority on that.
I don't have it.
2010, that's fine. And you know, since you brought that up, Erin, how often does these other municipalities update this?
It's a good question. I don't know any that have updated the 2015 codes yet. I certainly don't know any that are considering 2018. Most are far behind. Most tend to follow St. Louis County. And I can't say for sure what they're on. I think they're on the nine and I think that they are skipping the 12 and going on to 15 eventually, but that's based on my foggy memory. So it tends to be more difficult for municipalities, in my understanding, to keep these things updated. And that's what I found when I was researching their fees. They all anticipate future upgrades, but none of them are making them. Why say none? Fewer are making them.
Why, do you think that they'll jump on board once we do it, Erin? I mean, I'm sure it'll be out.
I think Florissant is a leader naturally in the St. Louis area. How many will follow us, I couldn't say. But they are, the other municipalities, including St. Louis County, they do pay attention.
Mr. Chodron?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to kind of piggyback on Mr. Egan. The only concern I would have is what he voiced and I know a prior administration kind of stopped that and I appreciate that, your attitude on major issues as opposed to minor issues inside the home or outside the home. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tossie. I think that's it. The next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. And we will move on to public hearings. We have public hearing number 1711026.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405.135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the City Council in the city of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, November 13th, 2017, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition. To issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 6830 to allow for a restaurant with outdoor dining for the property located 8180 North Lindbergh. Citizens of the parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling at 397630 or 2DD8395142.
Good evening. I think what we're probably going to have to do is just pass it. Or if you can hold it up for us and, oh wait, we have light.
Oh, look at it.
There we go. Just turn it towards you. There you go. Thank you.
Good timing.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Helen Lee with Townley Architects and we're working on this project to transform an old Del Taco into a Crazy Bowls and Wraps. So this is the building as it is now and we want to amend it so that we're not, so that we could change the requirement of 100% masonry. The look of Crazy Bowls has evolved and over the years, we've been changing it. And I'd like to show just a few images of the other Crazy Bowls and to see why this building, as it is, doesn't fit our image. This is on Manchester. You know, it's very, it's a CMU building, concrete block building, but it's a very modern, simple feel. This is what, the one we've done on Lindbergh in the city. These are the newer ones that we've been working on. These are going in Cincinnati. There's two finished and two more under construction. So the feel for these Crazy Bowls are just, you know, fresh, simple boxes. And what we like to do... Oh, these are just interior shots. We are keeping the envelope of the building and converting the inside. But for the outside, what we would like to do is to... Sorry, it's a little big. But we're looking at cladding it with cement fiber board. And we're thinking, what brick there is on it, we want to stain it to a warm gray color. And then also, we've had touches of wood to warm it up. So this area here, that would be a material like this. It is a, it's a high-density plastic laminate with wood veneer on top of it.
Okay, could you have him just hand it to our city attorney and he'll pass it? Thank you.
And then this is the, it's hardy plank. They come in large size and we're doing a two-by-eight foot panel to create the box. And then the brick that's there now, you know, we'll be staining it to a color. This is probably darker than it's going to be, but you know, we'll have some brick in the building.
And that will be a stain and not a paint, correct?
It's a stain.
It is a stain.
Yes. We found a product that we can use and, you know, we'll have to do some test samples. But you know, the idea would be to stain it.
Oh, that question started as we're turning the lights on. Councilman Caputa?
My turn? Thank you. Did you say, ma'am, that the brick that's there currently, you're going to change the color through a stain?
Yes.
Okay. And that's what you're, we're going to get, correct?
A bit lighter than that.
Bit lighter?
When we talked with planning and zoning, they didn't... When we talked with Planning and Zoning, they didn't, they didn't want such deep colors. So, you know, and stain goes on differently on materials.
Correct. The stain's gonna be different.
So, we're just gonna have to do some samples to find the right color.
So, you're looking at a little bit lighter than what you just showed us?
Yes.
Because I know that James Hardy siding, that's, that's nice stuff.
Yeah, it's a, it's a cement, it's a cement resin board.
Councilman Egan?
Thank you.
Thank you, and this is in my words. I'm pretty excited about this, this project. I want to clarify the, keeping the drive-through there, correct?
We are.
And what would the hours of operation be? Is that twenty-four hours a day, or is that?
Can I have the owner speak to that?
Absolutely.
All right.
Keith Kitses, owner of the Crazy Bowls and Wraps. The hours will be Monday through Saturday, ten-thirty to nine, and then Sunday, eleven to eight. Sometimes if the, if the business warrants it, we'll stay up until ten in, like, daylight savings time. So, no alcohol. Now, let's go, be my next question, just to make sure there's no alcohol there. Also, the, that's really not in a, near a residential area, but if there's issues with the, with the speaker on the box, we can work with each other on that, can't we? And I don't think that being a problem where it's located there. But sometimes if you get them near residential areas, drive-throughs, that becomes, becomes a problem. Okay, sure, yeah. But I don't think, and as, I'm gonna print Mr. Jones, we can get you to put a nice trash can in front. Right by the door there, because we, we are trying to work to keep the trash down in the neighborhoods, and we've been asking all our businesses. Oh, yeah, for like customers to use? Right, right, exactly. That's all I have. Thank you. Yeah, sure, thank you. Thanks for the support.
Councilman Shildraw?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank you, Mr. Kitses, for thinking of Florissant. And I do want to thank you, there were some suggestions made in Planning and Zoning, and I'm happy that you're gonna lighten up on that, on the sample that you passed down the line here. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yeah, while you have an opportunity, just to kind of whet everybody's appetite as to what kind of food you're gonna have.
So, we, like, as the name implies, we serve, like, wrap burrito things with different types of ingredients in them. We do salads and we do grain bowls. So, you'll come in and they'll say, you know, do you wanna wrap a salad or a bowl? And then you choose what kind of protein you want. We do, like, a wild Alaskan salmon. We do non-GMO antibiotic-free chicken, and we grill all this stuff in-house, tofu, stuff like that. And then you have quinoa, brown rice, or jasmine rice that you put in with it. So, it's not, it's not like a Chipotle where it assembles in front of you. We make it in back. We make all the, everything to order, but you do, can customize as you come in there. So, and it's, you know, not everything's, like, totally healthy, so don't get freaked out about that. We have, like, tempura chicken and stuff like that, too. So, yeah, we're hoping. What's that? Well, that Gold's Gym's really busy back there, so we're excited, we're really excited about that, too. So, yeah, we're just kind of getting through the city council and everything, and then through the REA that owns that project, West Glenboro, to get through all that, so. Yeah, but we're excited, yeah. We appreciate the time and having, you guys having us in here and everything.
Madam Counsel, can I have one more?
You sure can.
Thank you very much.
I'll turn it on. There you go. You're on.
Who's on? Oh, thank you very much. Well, I didn't know that Mr., Mr. Caputa had, was in front of me, so.
I know. There were a couple people in front of you, but I didn't want to.
I thought you were, I forgot my question.
Do you want to turn it back on after I go through the?
I'm gonna have to, I apologize.
I hated to take you off-guard like that, but we're gonna go this way. Mr. Shildraw?
Mr. Kitses, my kids really like your product, but aren't you, weren't you one of the first to kind of start this trend of wraps and stuff? Because you've been around a little while, haven't you?
Oh, yeah, twenty-three years, almost twenty-four years now, yeah.
Okay, everybody else is playing catch-up then, okay.
Yeah, everybody got healthy all of a sudden.
There you go. All right, thank you.
I don't know what happened. Everybody's offering healthy stuff, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for the business.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Kitses, how many Crazy Bowl restaurants do you guys have?
We have fifteen. This'll be the sixteenth one in Saint Louis, and then a couple in Cincinnati.
All right. And I know there's that one on Lindle. I thought, I think she said Lindbergh earlier, but the, near Saint Louis University that I've been to, so, yeah, yeah.
Lindle, yes.
Okay, so, and I know it's mostly students that go to that one. So, is there maybe certain types of people you're trying to target here in Florissant, or?
I just like the, I tell you, the Lindbergh is so busy, and, you know, I mean, you know, we, maybe the whole demo's this big and maybe we only take this much, but there's so many people going by there that, and we like the Gold's Gym, and I thought, I don't know, we don't have anything nearby here. So, I know most of the restaurants do really well, but ours is a little bit different, so, you know, we're crossing our fingers and hoping we do well.
I appreciate you being here in Florissant.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thanks for the welcome.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so your outdoor seating, I noticed you have six, three tables for six seats, and is that the max that you allotted for your room, or would you plan on going bigger with that in the future?
It has to do with the amount of parking space that we have, so, you know.
Oh, ma'am, could you just go real close to the microphone?
So, it has to do with the amount of parking spaces that are there, and with your requirements, you know, we wanted to maximize the amount of indoor seats, which only allowed us to have six seats outside.
Now, your outdoor seating, is that a raised surface where you plan on it? Like, is there a curb there and a combination curb sidewalk?
It's, it's part of the sidewalk level.
It's part of the sidewalk, okay. So, basically, the balers that you propose in order to, what's gonna protect this, this seating, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Sayem?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just curious, actually, as to when you would have your construction complete and when you plan to be open for business.
We're gonna, I think we can get a, we talked with Phil Lum, and I think we can get an interior building permit pretty quickly. We're just waiting to get this exterior done, because the weather's starting to change, and we were hoping to get that finished quickly. I'm hoping to get it done, you know, after we get our readings done, maybe within ninety days. So, what do you think, Helen? Trying.
This left side's killing me here. Mystery, mystery, can you remember?
Uh, yeah, but Tommy, I did, Tommy asked my question just now.
No, he did not.
Yeah, I wrote it down right here. No, but be excited to see you up and running.
Try Mr. Caputa again.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, you're saying within ninety, ninety days to be open? Just let us know when you're having your grand opening and your little soft opening, so we can come up and?
Oh, yeah, we want to invite the city out, yeah. That'd be great, sure.
Good. All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are looking forward to it. This left side. There you go. Mayor?
It's kind of refreshing to have a business that will let us announce it right away, rather than say, shut up and don't say nothing. So, we've had a lot of businesses that are coming, and we can't say anything. So, appreciate you letting us announce it early.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you. Thanks for having us in the office that day and talking to us with Phil and all the coming in. Appreciate it, yeah. You gotta come down and check us out.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, five twelve Rancho Lane. My concern is about the signage, the post. I noticed that on the plans here, they're planned to have a post. Is it gonna be the, the existing post that's already there, or was there one there? I don't know. Supposed to be forty feet back from the property line or the middle of Lindbergh or something like that. Is that correct? Okay, I never heard anything mentioned about the signpost, and I was just curious about that, because we have.
I'm gonna bring her back up, and hopefully she'll be able to answer you.
Yeah, this was a discussion we had with Planning and Zoning, and we do, we are proposing a post sign. So, we're thirty-five feet back from the street, and that was another part of the amendment that we're asking for. We didn't want to lose another parking space, and it is in, you know, within our property. There is another post sign that, but that's going down to the industrial park. Those are the signage for that, those people.
Anyone else? Nope. All right. Thank you. Seeing no further comments, Councilman Egan moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This public hearing is now closed. Thank you, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
For the first reading.
You don't have to stay for the?
You do not have to stay for the first reading. It would only be read once, and then.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is second readings. I will move to, oh, we have substitute bill number ninety-three eighteen. I will move to accept the substitute bill discussion. Oh, I need a second. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hanky, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Or discussion? I'm getting myself all confused. I think I have Mr. Egan syndrome right now. Motion carried, and the substitute, oh, we didn't vote on it, did we? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Yes. I will move to postpone this bill to the November twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen meeting, seconded by Mr. Shildraw. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carried, and the bill is postponed. Thank you. Hopefully, I'll get through the next one's okay. We have substitute bill number ninety-three nineteen. Councilman Egan moves to accept the substitute bill, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, and the substitute bill is accepted. Councilman Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by? Mr. Egan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Ordinance providing for the repeal of Chapters five hundred, five oh five, and five-ten of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Florissant, Missouri, as amended relating to the Building Code and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter five oh five and Chapter five-ten on the same subject, with certain modifications as hereinafter set forth.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading. Seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Ordinance providing for the repeal of Chapters five hundred, five oh five, and five-ten of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Florissant, Missouri, as amended relating to the Building Code and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter five oh five and a new Chapter five-ten on the same subject, with certain modifications as hereinafter set forth.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Good evening.
John Eaglemire, twelve eighty-one Graham Road. As I said in my three minutes earlier, this particular bill here, I do not know what the changes or modifications are within this bill and how they affect a common, normal homeowner. I've heard stories about the vent fan inside bathrooms now will have to be vented out to the outside, rather than to the, to the attic. I don't know if many people know that and if it's in fact true. Several years ago, I was confronted with a GFI issue in terms of a bathroom or within the house where there's water or sink, and again, all about safety. And doing my research on this particular code or the building regulations, there were so many derivations that it was very confusing to follow in how this particular bill and how it affects the city of Florissant residents, particularly an older resident who might be moving from this, from the city, and what will be in compliance and what is necessary to bring them into compliance. Because if they're not aware of it, it may be very costly for them just to move out of their home. I know recently, in terms of an acquisition of property within the city of Florissant, the seller was totally unaware of some issues. Even though an inspection occurred, there were still issues. So, I want to make sure that everybody understands that it's not a matter of being in compliance, a matter of doing the right thing for safety and for concern of the citizens that may have lived in the house for sixty years, but might not be in compliance with this particular Code of Ordinances and the building regulations. So, I don't know what changes are in here and what am I supposed to respect with this, changes of the building regulations.
Mr. Tossie and Mr. Lum, would you like to address this, or would you?
Before I leave, I better yield so I get a chance to talk again.
No, you'll be all right. I just, yeah, this is, because we did have a, an executive meeting on this about a month and a half ago, was it? The most of this was answered, but.
I heard one question specifically that about a bathroom, a bathroom fan?
Correct. Well, that's just one, what else is changing that a homeowner should be aware of?
That particular issue is not changing. Bathrooms are required to vent to the exterior, and they have been required for several years now. So, we, we require that now. The rule is this, if, in every bathroom, you either have to have an openable window or a fan that vents outside, not just to your attic. If we do find now a house upon minimum housing or an occupancy inspection, we will require that fan to vent outside. If we find no fan and there's a window that's unopenable, we'll require them to either install openable window or a fan that vents outside. But that's been the case for quite some time. Do you have another question?
Again, not to be controversial here, it's a matter of, the homeowner may have had this vent going up into their attic for several years, and all of a sudden, they're moving, and inspection comes, and as Mr. Lee indicated, there's a second inspection. What has to be done, and what is the cost as such, not your issue, but in terms of compliance with the building codes?
When someone is moving, they have to be in compliance with the property maintenance code. In fact, rather not when they're moving, when a new occupant moves in. And when someone's moving, they normally negotiate that inspection with a buyer. But we need to, do we need to have a new occupancy permit when the new occupant moves in? And the question is that of the property maintenance code. The building code is for new construction. But when evaluating the property maintenance code, we try our very hardest to make minimal impact upon our occupancy process. It's a process that we feel we do pretty good right now, actually, and we'd like to keep it just that. So, we didn't, we didn't, we tried not to have too many of those property maintenance code changes at all in this new ordinance.
To the counsel and Mr. Eaglemire, too, there's a, two different things, very different things, too. There is what triggers a code requirement. And the two thousand and fifteen Property Maintenance Code establishes the bare minimum health and safety conditions that need to be in a residence. Those are two different things. Aaron mentioned, you mentioned one, is that, say, a bathroom fan, if you have no healthy exhaust fan or no window in a bathroom, then it's always been the code. You provide a healthy envi- healthy environment. That's more of a minimum standard provided by the Property Maintenance Code. If you build an addition or make a change or alter a portion, that addition has to meet the current code. That's a trigger. So that's the difference. And I think a lot of the confusion that you might have, Mr. Engelmeyer, is when a code requirement is triggered, it's usually by work. The other, your main concern, question about whether just moving out of your house, I would think that predominant items would be the bare minimum standard, unless there were, of course, different condition, like there was work without a permit and it was obvious, and then we would have to, that would be a trigger, then it helps answer.
Thank you for that explanation. One of the issues that triggers it is the hot water heater issue, because it's not necessarily listed on the paperwork with the City Hall or the Public Works Commission. But again, when you find that situation, the hot water heater then has to be updated or at least permitted.
I don't understand your question.
In other words, a hot water heater was put in twenty-five years ago by Aunt Lucy. Aunt Lucy's now moving, and all of a sudden, I'm buying her house, and I'm confronted with the inspection, saying that she never had an inspector or a permit to put this hot water heater. And so at that point, what happens to me is the buyer, negotiable within the contract, I understand, but Aunt Lucy is totally unaware of it. So at that point, what's the cost aspects of how fearful the resident that's moving has got to be in compliance? Again, as a buyer, I'm going to be totally correct and have it done right.
We do our best when we find work installed without a permit, in that specific. You're talking about a water heater installed without a permit many years ago. We try our best to limit those types of appliances that would have required a permit, or anything that requires a permit for that matter. We try to limit that within about a three to five year span. So if an inspector feels that it's been longer than about that five-year length, we're not going to require a permit, partly because of the length of time. There could have been several owners in the meantime. We'd like to catch it as soon as possible. So if it, if it appears older, like in that case, I would expect that we would not require that particular water heater to be permitted, that we would allow it to continue.
So you would classify that new construction?
In that, in that water heater wouldn't be new in that it was twenty-five years old.
Right.
But anything that's installed new, we would call new construction.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments, clerk? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see ya. Hi, how are you?
Camille Tison.
Please state your name and address.
Camille Tison, nineteen, Norrington Court. So I have a quick question for you. Back to, they were talking about the first inspector, and then this different inspector comes out the second time and catches different things. I just had electrician come in and do work that was here in Florissant. The business was here in Florissant, went specifically through Florissant because of the inspectors and everything, had it all where they should have had permit set up and everything, come to find out they had never pulled a permit. What do we do in cases like that, when they said, well, we didn't involve Amrin for this, so we didn't have to pull a permit? When this is all stuff that's being done to our houses that has to have permits, and now we have conflicting things of somebody that's here in Florissant, that's the reason why we chose to come here in Florissant, was for that reason. So...
I'm going to bring you back up.
So electrician comes in.
Get closer to the mic, please.
I'm sorry, does electricity work? Is that a, an automatic requirement? If there's any electrical work in addition to your house, does that require a permit?
Yes.
So what falls on the company, that's usually the company should be getting that permit, correct?
The homeowner is responsible for that ultimately.
Okay.
But the contractor can be held responsible. Many times, it's hard to know who that contractor was.
Okay.
And where they are now.
See, we're talking here in Florissant. It was a Florissant city, or it was a Florissant company, and they know the Florissant rules. So, you know, that could have came back to me as I had done the work without the permit. So obviously, now I have the permit because I contacted them and said, I need a permit now. But if that would have not been me and a customer or a citizen never even knew about the permit that they needed, they could be falling back to an issue with this.
And that does happen. Contractors who say they're going to get permits don't, and then we catch that.
Okay.
Ultimately, the homeowner is the final, the level of responsibility has to end there. Although the contractor, it is possible, hold them responsible, it's much more difficult.
Okay. All right.
Does that make sense?
Yep. I think that's it. As far as permits going, is this, the permit cost is going up, is what we heard?
In most cases. The fee schedule being adjusted, but in some of those cases, they are not going up, they're actually going down a little bit. But in general, yes, they're going up.
Okay. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, madam president. Yes, did, did your contractor have it in your contract that they were going to pull the permits?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
Yeah, you ought to check on that. Then it'd be definitely they're responsible. If it's in the contract that they have to, that they, that they will pull the permits.
Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Substitute bill number ninety-three nineteen passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three We have bill number ninety-three twenty. Councilman Shildroth moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Sewer Lateral Fund to account number zero eight five zero, Professional Services, to allow for reimbursement to the Metropolitan Sewer District MSD for the installation of backflow prevention valves.
Councilman Sayam moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Sewer Lateral Fund to account number zero eight five zero, Professional Services, to allow for reimbursement to the Metropolitan Sewer District MSD for the installation of backflow prevention valves.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this?
John Engelmeyer, twelve eighty-one Graham Road, Florissant. On this particular ordinance, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars coming out of the sewer lateral program, I think is probably appropriate, but we're dealing with the company of MSD, which is a private company. I have tried to contact MSD before, but it goes very difficult because it's not a utility. At this point here, we're funding, in my opinion, a private company with two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Are we going to get any kind of reimbursement for this, or is this to associate for Professional Services to allow for reimbursement to MSD for the installation? Well, it sounds like we're reimbursing MSD rather than MSD reimbursing us for the funding of this. What's the status?
Mr. Caputa?
Is that it, Mr. Engelmeyer?
Were you answering, or did you...
No, I have a question.
Oh, you have a question. Well, let me get the mayor up here. You're going to have the mayor speak.
This is a joint effort by MSD and Florissant to give some relief to those homeowners who were affected by the floods of December fifteen and I think it was April or May of sixteen.
Are we going to be reimbursed from MSD? They passed a seven, one of the largest bond issues ever in the United States, and yet it sounds like or looks like that we're appropriating two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from our funds, City of Florissant, to MSD.
Yeah, we're participating with them, trying to help them stretch the dollars to give relief to as many people that were, as were affected by those floods into their basements.
Is it appropriate to fund MSD as a private company out of the city funds?
I'll let my city attorney answer that.
Obviously, this is a program which is going to benefit the public, so it's not an agreement necessarily with MSD being a private entity. It is to provide protections to the residents, and that certainly is an appropriate use of public funds.
I understand that, Mr. Hassel. My question is, is the reimbursement or the spending of public money in terms of MSD cooperation? And I understand the reason for this on the backflow and preventing flooding and issues to the residents, but the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I don't think ought to be upon the City of Florissant's shoulders. And again, in my opinion, it should be MSD cooperating in conjunction with the City of Florissant, and Florissant enjoying two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for reimbursement, and that's, that's why I was asking the question.
I understand, and I guess my response is that you can certainly have that opinion. This is a program, and I was not intimately involved in the negotiations with MSD, but as the mayor said, this is a joint effort being performed for the residents by MSD and the City of Florissant. It's my understanding that based upon the agreement with, with the respective parties, that MSD is going to be contributing and paying for the labor, and we are paying in part for the installation of the backflow prevention valves. And that's the arrangement that has been made. We'll all remember the citizens that were here not that long ago clamoring for some relief, and this is the effort to provide that relief.
And I see, I understand what you're saying, because I was attending those council meetings.
Right.
And listening to the situations. Still, I go back to the situation of the spending of public money, City of Florissant, to a private company, MSD, Metropolitan Sewer District. I'll cease at that point.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, Mr. Engelmeyer, MSD, under their, under their rules and regulations, were not going to cover these things, and so they worked with the city, and they've actually made a lot of concessions above and beyond what is their norm, and the city has agreed that we will participate to see that those people affected are taken care of. So MSD is part of what they're doing. They're contributing much more to these than we are, but they would not pay for a backflow preventer, so we're paying for the backflow preventer to do that. They're just handling it as all of their regular work. So it's really just providing a backflow preventer to the residents who have had these severe flooding problems. It's, I don't view it as, as paying MSD, they're just performing that along with all the other things. And it's my understanding, I was not intimately involved either, I know others that were, that MSD has, has done a lot more than they would normally do in what they've ever done in the past. So I think it's a fair, I understand where you're coming from. It is, we know it's legal, but we already, we already established that, but it's, it's just a way to make sure that those residents are taken care of. We're providing the funding to purchase the backflow preventers and get those put in. So that's my feeling anyway, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Caputa? Did you want to ask your question?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Pagano. The money's being spent, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with them, with MSD. Who's responsible, who's the responsible party for the contractors? The city or is MSD?
If I may, I know...
Oh, wait just a minute. There you go.
If I may, I know that there was, at least my memory is, there was some discussion about the city taking on that responsibility. That's my memory, but I also vividly recall advising the mayor and Lou Gerald's and others that we should not be taking on that responsibility and that liability. That should be borne by MSD, so MSD is responsible for hiring the contractors. To Mr. Engelmeyer's point, and it's a valid point, MSD has these responsibilities, and we want to make sure that they have any and all liabilities that are associated with that work. So MSD is hiring the contractors.
So we're putting our money in and letting MSD hire the contractors?
We're paying for the backflow preventers, as I understand it, the valves. So we're paying for that, but MSD is responsible for the contractors and all the liability associated with those contractors. Hopefully, there won't be any, and hopefully, all of the residents will be very happy with the outcome, and we'll all keep our fingers crossed. But I did not want this city to be assuming that responsibility and liability in the event that some, hopefully none, aren't satisfied.
Well, there's controversy already with some of the contractors, so, I mean, I guess that's going to be an ongoing thing with MSD and the city.
Well, again, I hope not, but I did not want the city to assume that liability nor responsibility.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, John, I wasn't going to bring this up this evening, because it's a pretty sour note, since I'm the one that instrumented this situation to try to help these residents. But when I go in, I go in goodheartedly to help some of these seniors that got their basements flooded. But when I'm lied to in those meetings and somebody can't pick up the phone to call me, John, it makes me pretty upset.
I hope you're not referring to me.
Not at all.
Okay.
John, I sat in there with the mayor and that CEO, and the CEO of MSD called me. He said he didn't want to get put in a bad spot like he was the liar, so he called me himself. But that was terrible what took place. It's backdoor deals that happened here at this city hall that I'm very upset about.
Hearing no further comments, clerk, please call, poll the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-three twenty passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three fifty-eight. Bill number ninety-three twenty-one. Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance amending Schedule thirteen, Table thirteen A, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets by adding their two portions of Florisoda.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Ordinance amending Schedule thirteen, Table thirteen A, parking prohibited at all time on certain streets by adding portions of Florisoda.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-three twenty-one passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-three fifty-nine. The next item on the, on the agenda is new business. First item under new business is board appointments. Move on to request. The night, the next item on the agenda is requests. We have a request, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lee?
Under, under board appointments, I would just like to ask the council again, we're still missing three members from the Personnel Commission. They were able to have their first meeting in many years with a quorum, so if the three that, the three that have members that, if you could please contact and find out if they want to reappoint it or try to get it. The chairman reached out to me and, and after their meeting and just said they would really like to get that positions filled, so that's all I'd say.
Thank you. Mayor?
I have no board appointments, but the Personnel Commission used to be appointed by the administration, and quite a long time ago, we asked the voters to change that because it just gave the appearance that the, you didn't want the same administration that was doing the discipline to appoint the board that would review that discipline. So we'd appreciate if the council could identify some members for Personnel Commission. This is a very important commission. I'd like to ask you to try a little extra harder to get those three members appointed. Thanks.
Thank you. We will move on to request. We have a request to transfer a special use permit number eighty-one sixty-three from HRLH Inc., doing business as Viet Thai, to Ulang LLC, doing business as Tia Kitchen? We have a request to transfer a special use permit number 8163 from HRLH, Inc., doing business as Viet Thai, to Ulang LLC, doing business as Tia Kitchen? Thai Kitchen. For the operation of a sit-down carryout restaurant located at 8458 North Lindbergh. Councilman Egan moves to accept the application. Seconded by Mr. Caputa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. The next, we have Councilman Jones moves to approve the request for George Awad to keep chickens at 825 Daniel Boone Drive. Seconded by myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried and the permit is approved. The next item on the agenda is first readings. We have bill number 9322.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to ordinance number 6830 to allow for the restaurant, for a restaurant with outdoor dining for the property located 8180 North Lindbergh.
Bill number 9323.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 8163 from HRLH Incorporated DBA Viet Thai to Au Lang LLC DBA Thai Kitchen for the operation of sit-down carryout restaurant located 8458 North Lindbergh.
Bill number 9324.
Ordinance approving the Community Development Block Grant, CDPG Fiscal Year 2018 Annual Action Plan for the city of Florissant, Missouri and authorizing and directing the mayor to submit such plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Bill number 9325.
Ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Florissant for the fiscal year commencing on December 1st, 2017 and ending on November 30th, 2018 and providing an effective date.
Councilman Lee moves for a second reading. Seconded by Mr. Caputa, all in favor? Oh, for discussion? I'm sorry, discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the members of the city council for the hard work on this proposed budget. When first presented with the budget, we found that the funds raised from Proposition P were co-mingled with general fund and there was no accounting of how those funds would be spent. One of the first thing the council did was raise the objection and they drafted a bill and unanimously passed an ordinance that would prohibit this from happening. When working on Proposition P, we listened to the public. They remembered one official's promise that all funds from the lottery would go to education, but they later saw that when it was passed, all they would do is reduce the current spending from the education budget by millions of dollars and simply replace it with lottery money. They were skeptical that the same thing would happen with Proposition P funds. When we did receive the amended budget from the mayor, it proposed that over $790,000 be reduced from the general fund budget. These are fees that have been paid for the past years out of those funds and it be replaced with Proposition P funds. It sounded like lottery money all over again. During the first council discussion of the budget, the council voted to put those funds back into the general fund and Proposition P funds would be used for things that were needed, such as much-needed pay raises for our police officers to help retain and recruit new officers, police officer protective equipment, the purchase of new police cars, computer equipment for the police, just to name a few. I for one will never go back on my promise to the taxpayers and vote to reduce spending from general fund for the police by just moving the money to Proposition P. There'll be another budget work session on November 15th and I know we will continue to find ways to reduce the general fund spending that now has us about 2.7 million in our dwindling reserves. I hope that this council will work together to finalize a budget that we can all be proud of.
So we move to, are you moving to post?
If there's no further comments, I'll move to continue to the next meeting.
To continue. So he makes a motion to continue this till the November 27th meeting. Seconded by Mr. Caputa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Bill number 9326.
Ordinance authorizing one-time retirement incentive opportunity for the city of Florissant full-time employees who qualify.
Bill number 9327.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $15,000 from account number 0150628020 golf course merchandise concessions to account number 0150626000 golf course utilities to cover golf course utility costs for the end of the year, fiscal year.
Mr. Lee?
I'm going to be moving for a second and also asking for three readings tonight so we can get this cleared, so move for a second.
Councilman Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $15,000 from account number 0150628020 golf course mechanic merchandise concessions to account number 0150626000 golf course utilities to cover golf course utility costs through the end of the fiscal year.
Councilman Lee moves for a third reading, seconded by Councilman Siam. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone that, oh, I'm, let's read it.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $15,000 from account number 0150628020 golf course merchandise concessions, don't look at me like that, to account number 0150626000 golf course utilities to cover golf course utility costs through the end of the fiscal year.
It's already Monday and it's a long week. Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this?
Good evening. Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. Last year, it was postage and mailing, you know? This year, it's electricity, utilities. Do we owe back statements from the utilities, Ameren, Spire, whatever? Are we that far behind that we need $15,000 for less than a month? Just a question. I don't understand every, like I said, every year, last year, we had the postage, was it $12,000? This year, it's the utilities. I just, I don't understand how we could, we can be $15,000 in a hole on, I mean, the money's there and it belongs to the golf course, okay? Got no problem with that. I just have a question of $15,000. You know, that's a lot of, a lot of money for electric, for utilities. That's all I have to say. If you have any feedback, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Here we go, I'm getting your feedback. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, Mr. O'Donnell, you're saying electricity, but it's for, it's for all utilities. As you mentioned, this is not new money, this is just money that they're making adjustments. They've lived within their budget, which is what we ask them to do. You may be familiar with water costs. If you've been to the golf course, we spend a lot of money on water. So this is just an adjustment to make sure that they have enough in their all utilities. You've got gas, electric, you've got all kinds of things out there, water, and it's just to make sure that they, that they are going to be able to make it through the year. So it's no new money, it's just reimbursements of, or redistribution of the money that's been budgeted. I'd also encourage you to look at the, at the finances right now at the golf course because they are doing phenomenal. We just got the most recent numbers from October and in addition to, you've heard me say this before, rounds are way up, revenue is way up, everything is doing really well. They're going to come in so far under, under budget this year that you'll, even you'll be happy with how the golf course did.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments, clerk, please call, pull the council for the final vote.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9309 passes and becomes ordinance number 8360. Bill number 9328.
Ordinance amending Section 125065A job classification and grade level by adding and deleting certain job classifications.
Bill number 9329.
Ordinance amending ordinance number 8182, which establishes a compensation plan for part-time employees with city of Florissant and which contains an effective date clause.
Bill number 9330.
Ordinance amending ordinance number 8182 establishing length of service plan for part-time employees by adding the position of economic development coordinator.
Bill number 9331.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $15,000 from general revenue fund to account number 493001 vehicle to cover operating expenses through the remainder of fiscal year.
Councilman Shildroth moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion, we have Mr. Egan.
No, I'm good. I was gonna, I hit it to, I hit the button.
Did the second it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $15,000 from a general revenue fund to account number 493001 vehicle to cover the operating expenses through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Councilman Shildroth moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. Roll call, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9309 passes and becomes ordinance number 8361.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to cancel the second meeting in December, which is Christmas, due to the Christmas holiday. Seconded by Mr. Caputa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we will move to councilman, council announcements. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. I was looking at the notables that were put out by the police department for the last week and I just want to throw a few things out there. Theft of a fire alarm from an unlocked car, burglary and theft from an unlocked house, a vehicle, theft from a driveway where the car was parked running, a theft from a firearm from a vehicle by unknown means, and a theft of an, from things from an unsecured garage. So I'm just going to kind of throw out there that people just need to use good common sense on these things. I mean, we're seeing more and more of this and I don't want to steal Mr. Caputa's thunder on, on his thing, but just ask that everybody kind of use good, good sense with your securing your property and making sure that you don't leave things unlocked, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that there is going to be a ward meeting tomorrow for Ward Number Eight and Ward Number Nine, which is my ward and Tommy Siam's ward. It's going to be at the James J. Egan Center beginning at 7:00 PM. So we're encouraging residents to come out and meet with the councilmen, get updates about the city and have an opportunity to ask questions after we make those updates. And the meeting is going to be taking place in the gymnasium. Once again, that's at 7:00 and it's for wards number Eight and Number Nine. Also, I just want to thank Commons Lane Elementary School for inviting the city council and the mayor out on Friday. Unfortunately, only, only myself and the mayor were able to make it, but we had a great time. They have this thing called High Five Fridays and basically, as the kids come into the school, we come in and we give them a high five, so they kind of wore us out there a little bit because there's a ton of students that, that go to school there. Kids had a ton of questions. They asked if I knew the president, if I've gone to the White House. It was just really funny dealing with a lot of the young children and we had a, we had a great time there. Also want to touch on what Councilman Lee had, had stated. I want to make sure people are securing their cars, securing their residence. We, you know, it's, to me, it seems like the more people that you have that are getting involved and looking out for things in your neighborhood, the, the more that the crime will be able to go down, so please, you know, take care of your, your neighbors and your residents and don't forget your Florissant five. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, I wanted to thank the VFW Post on the street here for the, it was outstanding parade. I know they didn't put on the parade, but for hosting the event, it was really a good moving event for Veterans Day and I want to thank all the veterans for their service. Something really important to me that I have to spring up now. I want to welcome Madeline Joanna Williams. My youngest daughter had a baby girl this last Thursday and maybe a grandpa, yeah. So Matt, so Matt and Amelia, thank you and Madeline Joanna Williams, welcome. Thanks.
Yeah. Mr. Shildroth?
Thank you, Madam President. The Washington Street project is complete and I would like to thank St. Louis County for this work and their contractor, GM R. Shoots, and I think they did a fantastic job on a rough stretch of road that's been that way for quite some time, but it is very much improved now. Graham Road, the MSD project is nearing completion. Please exercise patience still. It's been a long time. Please exercise patience near, near Westcott because it's kind of tricky for those folks getting in and out of Westcott and their homes and going on to Graham Road.
Mr. Caputa?
Oh, I'm not done.
Oh, you're not finished? I'm sorry.
I felt like I was at home there, okay.
[laughing].
She doesn't watch, don't worry about it. I also would like to echo Mr. Hanky's comments. I'd like to thank the VFW Post for a great Veterans Day parade on Sunday. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Parsons, Mr. Caputa and all veterans, thank you for your service, gentlemen and ladies. I would like to thank Valley Industries for the use of their fire truck. It was a great parade and I would like to congratulate Dennis Clear for being named the veteran of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, also, I would like to say my usual about firearms, like what Mr. Lee was saying. You know, make sure if you're firearm owner, be a responsible firearm, firearm owner and lock your, lock your firearms up. Don't leave them in your vehicle to be stolen and unlock vehicles. That is irresponsible. With the Second Amendment, that just gives fuel to the fire for people that are against the Second Amendment, so make sure you keep your weapons secured. Another thing I want to, have a happy Veterans Day to everybody, all the veterans out there, especially Friday. The United States Marine Corps celebrated their birthday, so I'd like to say happy birthday to all the Marines out there, sympathize my brothers. And also, very good parade that we had yesterday. Veterans Day parade was very good, very well attended and had a lot of nice floats out there. And Neighborhood Watch Program, make sure you join your Neighborhood Watch Program, keep an eye out for your neighbors. You got any kind of suspicious activity in your neighborhoods or around or you see, make sure you call the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Madam President. I echo the rest of the council in wishing all our veterans and those veterans on the dais tonight, very happy belated Veterans Day. We appreciate your service. Between now and the next time we meet, we will have Thanksgiving and I hope that everyone has a very blessed and joyous Thanksgiving. Between now and when we meet again, we will have the annual guns and hoses boxing tournament to raise money for backstoppers, go blue. And last but not least, I want to thank Camille Tissant for being here. She is now one of our co-ward captains, our ward captains for Neighborhood Watch and we appreciate her involvement. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yep, I just want to give a shout out to team. Don't forget team or food pantry down the street, you guys, any extra canned goods, change in the car, a couple of one-dollar bills, whatever, everything helps. I've hit a lot of phone calls about I've had a lot of phone calls about Shackelfort, you guys. They're about halfway through that. I did stick one of our Speed Cam trailers down there to slow everybody down. We had both of them, one on one side, one on the other. One has been removed because the construction work needed to push along, and they said the trailer was getting in the way, so one trailer is still down there, and they are starting to cut out the corner down at the end of Lindsay and Shackelfort there, so I wish it would get done tomorrow, but it's not. Please be careful about the construction workers and yourselves when you guys go through there. Thanks.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, Mayor Schneider mailed out a postcard to residents, was from the desk of Mayor Thomas P. Schneider. It says it was paid for by friends from Mayor Schneider, which is his reelection campaign fund. It kind of looks like a help-wanted advertisement, but he calls it a public service announcement. I will not dignify the action with a response, but many have asked me, they've received the postcard or saw it on social, social media, that I offer a few comments, so I will. My first comment is, disregarding the grammar and spelling errors, I was surprised that he bold-faced lied in this postcard, and I wonder if he'll send out another postcard correcting his lie. Secondly, Mayor Schneider says in this postcard, earn nine hundred and sixty-four dollars a month for attending two meetings. Perhaps that's all he did when he was a councilperson, is attend two meetings, but I think that the current councilmembers do much, much more than that to earn their, their pay rather than just doing the two meetings a month. He also tells people to mail resumes to his home address and his home email account. I'm guessing that he wants to review and handpick someone who will do what he wants them to do and will not be responsible for their, for their own conscience. This is not the first time that Mayor Schneider has tried this kind of bullying and childish intimidation tactic. And it's always after I've agreed not to do something he wants or disagrees with his opinion or not had support for an issue. He sent written communications to myself and the city councilmembers saying that he was going to unsheathe the sword and go to war with me. He's also resorted to making phone calls to community residents, saying he wants to start a recall petition against me as a councilperson. And if that's not bad enough, he's ordered staff members to make phone calls and lobby for him to get his way. Many, if not all, the councilmembers know that this is not an uncommon thing and have been party to these threats and intimidation and bullying tactics. All I can say is this is very sad. When things do not look favorable for Mayor Schneider, like after some recent articles in the Post Dispatch, he'll call on people to come to a council meeting and write letters and say how good he is and what a good job he's doing. I will let my actions speak for me. I won't invite people to come in and speak for me. Finally, I want to pass this back to the mayor. If you'll please pass this down for me. After a recent council meeting when things didn't go his way, Mayor Schneider walked up to the table where we were sitting and threw this fifty-dollar bill down on the table. He said that the council should use it to help with an attitude adjustment. Well, Mayor Schneider, nobody on the council wants your money, and I, for one, did not appreciate the comment. Perhaps you should take this back and seek your own attitude adjustment. Shame on you, Mayor Schneider, for your childish and bullying tactics and behavior when you don't get your way. Unlike you, I will continue to do the best I can for my residents. I will always have respect for the office of mayor, however, I will not always respect the person that's in that office, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd already had a conversation with Council President Pagano, and I agreed that this will go to Team, so this will go to Team tomorrow, is fifty dollars. You know, I really liked the High Five Friday that we had last week because I got a thick envelope full of compliments and encouragement from the Commonsland students at least. Our ice rink season is in full swing. Ice rink's going to be open till March. I'd like to congratulate Detective Sergeant Mark Pounders and Sean Robertson, our theater director, who were honored at the annual Thirty Leaders in Their Thirties Luncheon hosted by North County Inc. And we were proud to be the host of the C Y C All-City Championship, City-County Championship Games for Girls, and so they were using Coke Field and the Egan Field, two Coke Fields and the Egan Field over by the Egan Center. And tomorrow morning will be the Grand Open for, for Raising Canes. It's called Caniacs in Florissant to welcome the first Raising Canes here in the beautiful city. And Christmas in Old Town with Santa will be Saturday, December second, from two o'clock to four-thirty P M., and we'll have a lighting of the holiday lights at five-fifteen, and then later that evening we'll have the, I think it's about the twenty-fifth project liftoff that I started back in the late eighties. We got the winter break camp during the, when the schools are out of school for the Christmas holidays, similar to our summer playground program, and the comment period for the deadline for Florissant's proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen Community Development Block Grant is November twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a budget work session scheduled for Wednesday, November fifteenth, six P M. here in the council chambers. The next regular meeting of the city council will be on Monday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. And Councilman Parsons moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Siam. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.